Oh, you did all day. Ratcliffe. Four Acre. Here. Layton. Here. Um, we would have a written report. I did not have one submitted. Uh, so I decided to take a vacation last week. Uh, so I will have that's a report for, I guess, it's in July, um, and for the next meeting, but just a couple of updates. Um, just for the public, the water main repair at South Harlan is in process. Uh, that's going to require full block replacement for that water main. So that was done under, or everything's been contracted under emergency services, or emergency repair has been contracted. Uh, so they'll be moving that line from under Harland Street, actually out west into the, into the right away between the, around the sidewalk. So that will be bored in, put new services in, uh, get that stuff completed. So those works has got that issued and, and moving along with it. Um, we were denied or received notification that we're denied the CDS, uh, submittals. So that's the community direct spending. We asked a million to Representative Smith's office and Senator Fisher's office. Um, he said they had a flood of them. Anybody that got awarded last year, they just automatically just kicked out. So we can still submit those in. We have one for, uh, water, water main project and one for the second phase of sewer rehab. Uh, besides that, but good, I guess, could be good news is our LMI, our load of monitored income is now moved to sixty-one percent or sixty-one and a half percent for Falls City. The previously that was at forty-eight, moving over fifty-one percent opens up the avenue for, uh, CDB, CDBG public works grants. So infrastructure grants, uh, pretty well, exact same requirements of the CDS, just coming out of a different pot of money. Uh, so we do have a submittal getting ready to submit the phase two, uh, sewer rehab onto that. Um, submittal here, that'll be coming before council, hopefully the nineteenth at the next meeting or September fourth, I think. Uh, to have that commitment component. Uh, we don't want to say that, then we can still issue or access SRF funds through the state. So uh, we did receive a grant, so the tree board submitted a grant for, uh, Nebraska Forest, or the state forest for twenty-five thousand for a tree pruning project at St. Park. We were not in the preliminary letting because they, there's only a hundred thousand dollars available and they have like fourteen or so applicants. Uh, so we got kicked out based on the value. However, Nebraska Arboretum, they reached out, Nebraska Forest Service reached out to Nebraska Arboretum and Arboretum ended up funding the remainder of the project. So we did receive an award, uh, of twenty-five thousand to do a tree pruning project, which the tree board had slated Stan's Lake Park as the initial one to start. That's the largest park with the most amount of trees. Like a hundred forty-two or a hundred forty-seven trees to be pruned on that, on that park. So I think the overall project's about thirty thousand dollars. Um, but twenty-five of that will get done through the, through the grant. That's all I got.
Chief.
Uh, National Health, all night, five days, swimming pool. That's it.
Consent agenda made its approval for July fifteenth. Agenda approval, claims approval for July sixth through the nineteenth. Uh, consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Seven or eight yeas.
That will move to old business discussion and actions, posted to amend the city code six dash three seventeen by proposing time limits for sale and exhibition of fireworks to ten AM to eleven PM between the twenty-seventh of June and the sixth of July, except for ten AM to midnight on the July third.
Want to talk about it, Fer?
Yeah. So, uh, after we talked last time, I just uh, looked at the calendar and threw out some numbers, just going into next year because it's on a Friday, but, uh, following the state guidance that we have been going by. And so then, uh, these are, this is what I propose. Upper discussion.
All right. Uh, oh, so I added a couple of submittals within your packet. Had our current ordinance and then the, um, state's ordinance. We, we currently say we follow the state of Nebraska, um, and seventy-two hours after that period where you can sell, which is say Nebraska's June twenty-fourth to July fifth is that timeframe for the sale of fireworks. Um, then we allow that seventy-two hours beyond that.
For discharge.
For discharge, yes.
This is just a thought I had. Why don't, I'm, what if we follow the state statute for when you can display them with the option of council on like, for example, if the fourth would fall on a, on a, on a Thursday, like it did this year, and we want to let them go the Saturday, and then we just do it per year instead of having just a carte blanche every year going out to the, you know, six or seven. I don't know. I just, I think when, when they sell, they should be able to discharge and, and kind of limit it to that for the most time unless there was a special circumstance. That's my thought.
I think that having something like that would probably, um, prevent a lot of, because then, yeah, you're right. Like if the fourth falls on a Monday or even like a Tuesday, then people will be upset that they can't have their gatherings for their fireworks the following Friday. So I feel like something like that where it would be just deciding annually, like okay, because the fourth is on this date, this is the actual city stance on it. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
So were sells or, or?
No, 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 sales are full state statute.
Sales are.
Just if we want to extend the display, it would be, you know, somebody says, hey, I want to do it till the seventh this year. Okay. Well, please counsel and good sign.
I think you're getting a little, I mean, after the discussion of last time, I think, um, it's a little complicated. I think it could change it to your annual. I didn't get any, um, grievances about the display this year. I know Fer who said you did. Was it about after the fact or what, what was it?
After the fact, you mean after the fourth of July? Just too late at night.
Okay.
That's all it was.
Yeah.
That's what I started with.
So we've never really had an issue with the seventy-two hours afterwards.
Fine.
I had different points. People said it was too long of a stretch. I had about three people complain to me on it.
I just don't think you want to give the, um, the ordinance too complicated for people.
Well, and that's why I proposed the twenty-seventh through the fifth, actually the sixth. Because and, because you extended and then the third, fourth and fifth are your nights right around the holiday days, like it's on that page. The still coverage, almost the same amount of days, it's just I'm trying to put a timeline. Plus some of the feedback I got prior to all that was going off during the day and early in the morning when some people like a social weekend. So that's why I should hit a start time at ten AM.
Okay. Yeah. I, I missed the six. I'm sorry.
So you want to shorten the two days up to the point of the sell days? Well, that's whatever's, whatever's proposed on here, yes. And it goes, well, actually, yeah.
Yeah, retail, currently retail allows on June twenty-fourth.
We've always been, I think our, I almost have my state certificate even says twenty-fifth. But I seen what you had there and it revised statute. So I mean, yeah, what it is, but we've always been the twenty-fifth through.
Well, Chief Baker wanted to uniform that you're selling at the same amount of days that you are setting off fireworks. There's not confusion selling it two days ahead of time, but we allow fireworks or a day afterwards. And so it was, it was recommended by Chief Baker to make the exhibition of fireworks, the sale of fireworks just run concurrently about the same two. It just makes it easier on everybody to understand.
If you're selling fireworks, but not able to shoot fire. Oh, it caused a problem. So whatever, whatever dates is decided for the sale and the fire should come inside.
You want to just, I mean, to Carlos' point, to make it more uni- uniform and simple, just follow what the state says. I mean, if we can light till the fifth or sell till the fifth, sell to the fifth and light.
Well, and this proposal doesn't have, we don't have any time restrictions. So see, we don't have.
Oh, yeah. But I'm saying, we had.
Any kind of curfew law on it. That's right. That's what this is actually proposed as.
I think the curfew is probably more concerned than.
Than the timeframe. And I think that was the discussion the last time. I think I'm okay with the seventy-two hours afterward, just because, um, of depending on when the day it falls on.
So maybe the only language that we need to actually add to.
It's just the times.
It's just the times. I think, cause I think you're right. That's what we discussed last meeting is that like pretty much everybody's okay with what the days are. It's just the actual times.
Here, I actually add on the twenty-twenty-five fireworks, uh, state statutes have it, you know, sell on twenty-fifth. We moved it to twenty-seventh. That's on a Friday. We start selling. So if there's people, uh, just say Steve Randall's gonna have another, or fireworks display down the south side and he's wanting to pick his fireworks up Thursday. I'm not able to sell him the fireworks, pick up a couple of days ahead of time to arrange him on a trailer if we shorten the two days up. So I, I'm pushing to go to state statutes. So that way we're following the state statutes all the way through on that. And if we go over to the twenty-twenty-six year, uh, but the twenty-seventh falls on Saturday and the twenty-fifth is on a Thursday. So then, I mean, we got to look at tax revenue too. Sales tax revenue coming in and businesses revenue coming in town. I mean, with the surrounding communities, I'm gonna say, I'm not exaggerating. I would say it's three hundred people come to town, buy fireworks and they stop at Sonic, other business and that, and then the sales tax revenue. You take a Friday off or a tax revenue, you're getting a big cut. I mean, on the tax revenue for the city.
And that's why I agree with you. I think it's since the discussion of last time, I think the only thing to be added to our current is just the timeframe of the days.
Well, I think eliminating some of that late night frustration too might ease some of the concerns with some of those that do wind off earlier. It's probably more neighborhood specific too, as to some of those that lie right away on the twenty-fifth for a bit, like a few days. Ultimately, I still have a little bit of my concerns.
Either way, any revision will take a full ordinance revision. I'll have to draft and draft up and I get Dunn's office for a review, uh, to bring back to council. But I mean, you could take action on a component or an item if you're willing to speak like hours out or something. If, I mean, you, to get a consensus, you need to pass something, uh, overall. So it's, hopefully you guys will try to process that before we actually come back with something drafted.
So I feel like if we amended this proposal to remove the date specifications and keep the times, I think that would be something that I think the motion ought to be amended that.
Now, second.
So keep the, match the state, what you're talking to then the times of ten AM to midnight.
I, I think.
You got some different timeframes there.
I think it's, we want to, I think it's more, we want to keep our length, our current language with the addition of the times proposed.
With a curfew?
Yes.
Okay. When would you want the extended timeframe to kick in within this?
So based on that, so if we wanted to remove, so say the, um, exhibition of fireworks, you know, through whatever the ta- the timeframe is, with the, from ten AM to eleven PM, with the exception of July third, fourth and fifth, having ten AM to midnight.
Okay.
So if somebody, yeah, specifying the, specifying the dates, just say the exception to those times would be the third one.
You know, pretty well anytime after the, the third and beyond, wherever that would fall would be the ten AM to midnight and prior to that would be ten AM to eleven PM.
Midnight on third, fourth and fifth, and then the re- remaining timeframe is till that ten PM.
Eleven.
Eleven PM.
Ten AM, eleven PM.
I believe the statute has New Years.
The, the statute does talk about New Years. I did want to mention that. We do not have anything within our, to talk about New Years. What are we not even going to do?
Well, the, the code says it's, you can discharge it according to state statute. So state statute says you can discharge at New Year's. So New Year's is going to be the midnight timeframe, I guess, is that?
No.
Yeah. Where's this?
I think we probably knew that.
I would.
The shorter the eleven PM, because it gets darker a lot earlier, obviously, in winter.
Yeah, statute agrees, December twenty-eighth.
You're gonna want Randall to make it better, make it twelve thirty.
Obviously, that's the way it is. I mean, we just don't.
Yeah, I don't think.
We won't, we won't do anything besides that. We'll just do it this way.
Do you, have you guys had issues with fireworks at New Year's?
No.
We hear a couple going on, but any?
I've remissed.
Got the motion in a second. Yeah. Okay. So we have a motion by Ratcliffe, right? In a second, but Ron?
All vote down.
All right. Eight yeas.
So you put together something for the next meeting as we can move on forward.
Yeah. Yep, I'll take it. We'll, we'll drive, revise the section six dash three seventeen, um, for a new ordinance. And then we can bring that item to council for ratification.
As we discuss this, what are, how are we going to communicate this next year? I know last meeting, watching the video, you guys had discussed signage or anything like that. Is it just going to be a amendment and then just let it go?
Well, I think.
Publicized, kind of changed by the.
Yeah, we, we put, I don't know. Well, this is the first time we've ever done anything, you know, so I suppose with social media, the way it's been going with everything else and then.
I didn't know if they have, didn't say ordinance, but to have it posted at, at the stands that are selling and the cash register, whatever to give the.
So that lets, that lets the public know who's buying it locally. These are the hours, but.
We can put it Facebook journal on and journal.
As long as we communicate it. So then it's like the, oh, we didn't know it changed, which obviously.
Nobody even knew. We, we didn't have one. So there wasn't no change. We didn't really have it.
We can do an outreach, um, through the website, through social media, through newspaper. And also when we do the licensing, the annual permitting for the fireworks, when they come in, we can provide that information along with that license, to the licensing holder. We don't, we don't have anything that says they have to put it up somewhere.
No.
Uh, or anything like that, but at least they have the information. So if somebody asks a question, they could, they could answer it for them. Or direct them to where it needs to, somebody that can answer the question.
That's a cheap question. Yeah. People come, I love asking if there's any way to display fireworks. And we say, no city parks, no city property. I mean, so there is some questions. I mean.
Yeah, there, we usually get them on parks and, and city property things.
Yep.
Yep.
Number two, discussion enacted, resolution authorized the replating of two tracts to approximately one tenth, tenth of an acre of land on, to realign the right of way along Thirty-third Street and parcel seven four oh one seven zero seven four five for fifteen hundred dollars to pack red storage.
All right. So this is brought up as a discussion item, the last meeting went through, had a little further review. The, those parcels in question, I guess, in the packets, we haven't picked it out. It's about a tenth of an acre. So this resolution written very broad. Um, essentially it would need to have replating completed to get this completed. It would replat these into the parcel of, of Jordan, which is that seven four oh one, seven oh, seven four five, um, parcel. So there's no real legal address at this point in time until that replat happens. But this is a good authorization to get the replat completed, uh, via zoning administrator process that, uh, planning commission would need to do. A replat would have to be submitted, administrative replat, which can be done without public hearing and all that. Just gets submitted. Um, I do a review of zoning administrator, make sure it meets subdivision requirements. Uh, there's a fee for them to pay, I think it's a hundred dollars plus a filing fee to get that done. Uh, then we would have a purchase agreement component for fifteen hundred dollars.
So I don't remember something about twenty-five hundred dollars on this past meeting or something.
The, the initial, initial offer was twenty-five hundred, um, is what they had proposed. Um, they came back with fifteen hundred. I, the offer twenty-five hundred to start with. Um, uh, we've kind of left it in his hands to see what they wanted to do. And Lucas can probably come up and speak a little bit out of it upon it for Ron if you. Yeah.
Just manage something.
Yeah. So, so Lucas threshold, so the, uh, twenty-five hundred was the target total goal paid, right? So then he's offered fifteen hundred and would take care of all the other expenses. Probably at least six hundred dollars maybe to replat. Um, there'd be some filing fees, the hundred you talked about. So it gets closer to the twenty-five hundred. I think twenty-five hundred is where he wanted to be. Twenty-five thousand dollars per acre was kind of the guideline on that. So.
But doesn't anybody that buys the property have to pay them things anyway? Don't you know that when you're making offers?
Yeah, I think he was, I think he was just thinking, I'd like to get this done for twenty-five hundred. I think that was the, that was the discussion.
Well, it's probably no good to know what else, those properties, I mean.
What's that?
The property probably isn't any good to nobody else except him anywhere.
That's, that's kind of what's added. You know, there's, there's a, there's a pretty valuable little spot there along the highway where, you know, could maybe be developed someday if we can just clean this up. Um, I think that's, I mean, there's no guarantee that it'll be developed, but for the future, just make it easier for that entrance if it's ever going to be developed on either there.
Thank you. Motion to approve.
A second.
All vote.
Eight yeas.
Under regular business, number one, consideration of a conditional use permit for firearms and ammunition sales at twenty-four oh four Hardest Street, public hearing.
All right. So we declare the public hearing open at six twenty-three PM.
Hearing closed.
Oh, what? Okay, six twenty-four PM.
And we'll move on to number two, discussion in action, consideration of a conditional use permit for firearm and ammunition sale at twenty-four oh four Hardest Street, recommended by the planning commission.
All right. If you recall, we went through a zoning tax amendment to revise, uh, to allow a conditional use application or allow conditional uses for residential commercial flex. Um, Isaac Naidoo applied for this, went through that process, council approved that, that text amendment was put into place. Uh, then he went through and actually put in the conditional use application. We went through the public hearings, um, with planning commission. So they did their recommendation and just had the public hearing that we had now for the second one that goes, the hearing for council. Uh, I did, there's no real issues that I see with it from a zoning administration standpoint. Uh, all the qualifications and everything were made. The conditional use permits are, they stay with the entity. So they're essentially forever unless they're no longer using them for, you know, I think twelve months or so longer, or don't meet certain requirements, you know, we take it out. So it gets filed and stays with that, that address. I mean, you do have another one that Strucker's, Strucker Gun component. That's one that's in the residential commercial flex currently. It was kind of like grandfathered in, um, not under conditional use, but that's the usage has been performed down there.
What is that building that's right around from?
It's, it's a residence. It's the residence. Yeah. It's the, um, northeast corner of that intersection at twenty-fourth and Harlem.
How close is that to that school?
Cross street.
It'll walk me up.
Are they, yeah.
Is it in school zone?
No, he was here last time and it's five hundred, it's past the five hundred.
I think I asked him, he said.
They still have to go through.
He's still had to go.
They still have to go through, um, ATF components. Um, allowing conditional use is one piece for them to go actually then complete the, the remaining parts.
His focus was like historical restoration more than just like.
Gunsmithing.
Yeah. Yeah. And Isaac couldn't be here tonight. So I got most information from me is, is of Gunsmith. That's what he went to school for. That's their plan to do. They have some requirements of, I think it has to have a trigger guard. Anything that they use as kind of the ATF components, uh, leaves the residents through the proximity of the school. That's what they found in.
Nothing to improve.
Second.
All vote.
Eight yeas.
Three, discussion in action, request for special designated license for an outdoor beer garden at fourteen seventeen Stone Street, August twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, Falls City, October twenty. Motion to approve.
Cobblestone thing.
Yep. It was my second one, sport.
All vote.
Eight yeas.
Discussion in action, resolution accepting a donation of parcel seven four zero one seven zero nine nine one from the community medical center.
What's my, my? Um, I just, prior to Ryan talking, in your guys' package is a picture of this. I've already talked to, uh, Dunn's office earlier. We, I thought that was a separate parcel ID from their stormwater retention basin to the north, but it is parcel together and it is currently put together to meet some bounds. Uh, so in the subdivided, it actually never got parcel out into a lot. So really did not meet our subdivision regulations. Um, I'm sure how it got done that way, but it went through planning commission and went through all the approvals and got to that point. Uh, so if we did a component there, it'd be needing to remove that little section that's kind of highlighted. That's directly east of Wilderness Falls one from the property line, south of Wilderness Falls one to the, to the north end that abuts Verida. We'll take a look at that. So it's not actually the full parcel in the retention basin. Seems you want to maintain the retention basin. We would hope they have a bunch of written. So we don't have to.
Yes, for us, this would be a bit of a cleanup. To be honest, we thought we included that with the Wilderness Falls land that we sold to them. And, uh, for years I just didn't realize it was ours. It's not marked as to whom it belongs to. And I think someone tracked it down and I guess it is still part of the pond. And we're wondering why, uh, up to this year Wilderness Falls has just maintained it because it looks like their property and, uh, ended up being ours. And we thought this is worthless and makes no sense. How did this happen? I asked Anthony if the city would consider taking it as a donation. I realized that's some extra work. I think in the meantime, we did discuss, uh, we didn't get to talk about it until today that maybe the first choice should be approaching Wilderness Falls and seeing if we can include it in their lots. Um, and so if you wanted to table this, I'm fine approaching them and saying if we can include it with them and say this really should have been included to begin with. Otherwise it just ends up with a fifteen foot right of way that is mainly a ditch that, uh, doesn't really have a purpose other than water removal from the Wilderness Falls properties and, and western.
And the majority of it's already a street right of way. Maybe a couple of feet on the west side that are not. I was under the impression you guys were maintaining them, but.
Well, we are now.
Oh.
Often, our chief baker is really good with his crew about reminding us of our civic duties. So we appreciate that, not knowing to this point that that.
So who's been nominated?
Until this year, it's been Wilderness Falls. Since this year, uh, when we were notified that that was ours, we've been logging it.
Yeah, probably they got some new maintenance staff of Wilderness Falls and they figured out that it wasn't theirs and they were doing extra work.
So I, I appreciate, uh, Anthony putting it on the agenda. I would suggest just tabling it and seeing if we can have that become part of Wilderness Falls, which logically is where it should be. And they have been maintaining it up to this point. But, uh, well, I don't know if they would have objections or not. Do you have anything you'd like to add, Anthony? Do you have anything you'd like to add, Anthony?
We just have to do a plat, probably since it would have a.
No, we'll replant it, that's.
Yeah, depending on if the original plat had that section dedicated as right of way. I assume it did, but I did look back and if it doesn't, we have to do a whole time.
Original sale contract and it, it did not include those pieces of land, so it, it is. I, I fully acknowledge that it belongs to Ozville. We just would like it to go with the property that it more logically belongs to.
So, so far, we don't know, except that you're.
Well, that's just.
No, I, I just met with Anthony and we discussed options today. And if, if we discussed it sooner, we probably would have taken it off the agenda until we knew.
I mean, the best interest would be to them, just to be maintenance for the city, maintenance for you guys, so.
Yes. I agree.
So we can, we can talk with Excel. Try to take that to the next step and see if we can get a, a plating done of that at the same time, we can clean up that meets and bounds that's tied up with C N C's piece and actually get that, that piece pulled together and see if we can get that one at the same time.
So you want to table this then, work that out, or you want to go ahead and buy it? I mean, we, we might be back here in, in six weeks if, if Excel says we don't want, we don't have a motive.
Yeah, with it being tied to that parcel, we're in need to plat it one way or the other. If we take it over as a donation for that component, we'll need to have a plat for that.
Then we'd have to turn right around and give it to them, sell it to them.
So the cheapest way would be if we can get Excel involved, say you guys were already maintaining, provide you your street value, you know, component.
City, city takes it, we got more, we just want you more.
I'll make a motion that we table this. Do you want a specific date or this table?
Uh, let's just table it, I know you can hold back Excel and see if you're interested in moving, guys can do it on their own.
Who was our second, sorry?
All vote.
Eight yes.
Number five, discussion and action, grievance hearing for I B E W local fifteen thirty-six. Grievance twenty-two forty-four dash oh one regarding employee attendance policy and employee utilization policy adopted on June tenth, twenty-two forty-four.
The union is thinking that, feeling I should say, that this whole policy is changing our work rules and our work conditions, and that goes against article forty-two in our labor agreement. And I've been back and forth on the grievance with Anthony and all of our notes, which he actually told me to. And there's already, in the handbook already, working policies and procedures and all that. And change in article forty-two as well, change of handbook should be with you and approved.
Hi, Dale. I've supported the union, I voted for every contract that we have, and it's only disputed to you guys one time. And, you know, I'm going to say some things, I know I'm going to be accused of not being a friend of the worker here, but, you know, just remind, I, I called through the union two people before to make sure you guys, to see what your guys' position was. Part that frustrates me, Dale, is you and, I can't remember who else was here, we talked about it and you just sat there. And from me and a few other council members, we, we view that as, the union's okay, right? So we proceeded with this. I, I've, I've read it, what, what you said and, and I, and I talked to you afterwards and, and you guys were upset about it, but and you said you didn't know you could speak, and, and I know you're new to this, I, I, but God, I know the rules to be able to come talk, I mean, anybody can talk, I mean, Lucas could get up and talk about this right now. You gotta know the rules because we as council members can't read your mind, you know, so I mean, we could have bypassed this whole grievance process. Because I mean, it was what, June tenth or whatever, we, we decided this last time or June, earlier than that, I guess that was the first email. June third, and here we are in August, you know, two months later and we're spending time on this again. I guess what, what I'm looking at is honestly, I don't know what in the, in what we putting in there that's harmful to that, to you guys. You know, I mean, there's nothing like, I think we're, we're hurting your working conditions or anything like that.
No, it's just that going, not a binding by the labor agreement is how we're seeing things.
Yeah, I mean, I hear what you're saying on that. And then, you know, I, I read your guys' labor agreement that we have there. And, you know, I think it's overall, it's a good policy that we got here. And, and I think it's more of a process thing that you're, that you guys are upset with, correct?
A little bit, yeah.
Yeah, but then, so as I was reading through this late yesterday and, you know, read some more today, you know, you guys are upset that we're breaking that rule, that, you know, we're, we potentially changed something, you know, I mean, you're, you guys have an opinion, Anthony has an opinion, you know, and, and all that. But, but then as I read this and I read through the grievance policy and it's thirty days to bring it to the council. And I looked and it's June tenth, and then I'm like, okay, they're mad that we're not following X rule, but then they want to go past the grievance period, so it's kind of like, do two wrongs make a right?
That's another thing on there because that grievous procedure is so mismatched, it's not even funny because it's talked about five days excluding weekends, holidays, then it goes working days and it goes days. And if you add all that up, it's thirty-five days.
But, but you see what I'm saying, I mean, there's, there's some in there that say calendar days, and then this just says days. So I'm no legal beagle, but I think you'd have to just say days, you know what I'm saying? Is it clear? One hundred percent of this, it probably needs to be addressed in twenty-twenty-five when we renegotiate this. But it says days, you know, and I, I mean, I'm saying if, if that part of the, the contract says this is what you're expected to do and, you know, and you're coming saying, okay, well, you were, you know, violating forty-two, do two wrongs make a right? I don't know, you know what I'm saying? And that's where I'm struggling with this. I mean, we can't go back in the past, but I, gosh, I wish you would have spoke up. And we could have tabled it and said, okay, let's, let's go back and let's get, you know, our ducks for us, so we're not sitting here in agreements. Because I, nobody likes grievances, I mean, you guys don't like grievances, it takes your guys' time up, it takes, you know, you have to probably spend, maybe spend money at the union or your dues are going for something that you guys don't want to do. And likewise, we've got Mike Dunn here, plus the other attorney that we've dealt with, the city's incurring costs and it's losing everybody money, taxpayer money, so I guess I'm just, I wish you wouldn't have came to this, you know? And I mean, I can see where you guys are coming from in forty-two, where it's saying that, you know, we've, we've changed this and I can see Anthony's, I can't remember the, the, the number where he's saying, well, no, we can do it, so it's kind of like, I guess if, if it's not hurting anybody and, yeah, I mean, I mean, if you guys say, hey, we're, we're actually getting punished or, you know, hurt, okay, I, I think I'd be able to agree with this, but if you guys are okay with it, and it's just that you wish we would have, okay, we can't go back, I mean, you know what I'm saying? I mean, if, if we said, okay, let's grant your grievance and you go back to your union meeting, would you guys approve it and then we could approve it again?
Essentially, small changes here and there probably, but essentially, yeah.
Okay, well, I guess I just spoke my piece, I just, it was kind of eating on me since I saw this system again.
I provided a written report that council has printed out one, therefore, which was the response that I've provided to I B W. This was not submitted out public. However, we can talk through the components. Really, it goes over kind of the breakdown of the interpretation that I would give, we came back with a thirty days. And I kind of re-explain that in, in the meetings, actually, I believe we are on our thirty days, thirty days from the, from the initial event, not the initial event, from the initiation of the grievance, which has been June tenth, which would have died July tenth. Would have been the last day. And we talked about the rules and regs that article, really talks, says, you know, rules incorporated the employee handbook into that union agreement and then rules and regulations, whereas the management of the right components within that agreement talks about reasonable rules and regulations. And the sole authority of the city to, to implement those. And I look at the policies we put through, which we, I believe they're reasonable, I don't believe they provide any, you know, an undue hardship to the employees, it basically tells them how to complete their timesheet, who to contact if they cannot make it to work. It does have, we did implement a utilization policy, however, that policy's been adopted, but it hasn't been put into place, so the procedures to do that have not actually been enforced by management, because we haven't set that completely up to ensure all the employees understand it, how we're going to do that and how we're tracking those components for that utilization. We've got to set up some additional accounting functions within software to do that. So that piece actually isn't being enforced at this point in time, but the policy has been, I guess, set.
And you, you've reviewed this, haven't you, Dale?
Yes.
I, I mean, I almost wonder, to, to keep harmony between, you know, I don't want unions mad at, at management and I don't want management mad at unions. I mean, on all, I mean, I don't know, can we consider alternative two, where we conditional implementation with feedback? I mean, would that be a happy medium?
I was going towards our, yeah, alternative three. So what did I, what I did, provide some, some basic alternatives, or something we could at least have a fifth for. Through my talks with, with I B W, we didn't really have a clean, precise process, so the agreement right now is that one little piece says a union approval does show habits potentially would even be done besides a fulsome middle or, or right to bargain within that. So provided a couple options to potentially look at how that would be done. Joint review committee, that would be some, you know, city ordinance or to create another committee to do that. A lot of types of cities have a committee for your ordinances itself to handle those, you know? A committee that's just going to deal with that piece, I potentially create a joint policy review committee and incorporate that committee then into the labor agreement. The one concern I have moved forward as management is what policies do really, really need to go to the union? I mean, we have policies, laws change, you know, we set union agreements for three years. A law changes and we've got, provides a component, provides a basic operational procedure or policy that then defines that procedure, how long is that going to take to get done? You know, and where does the rights to the union stop with, I mean, preventing the daily operations of the city?
Well, I think that's where that gray area is though too, because from the union side, you know, if they're going for alternative three, they essentially want to be involved in all the decision-making and grievance. I mean, we're trying to leverage reasonableness, like, that's an interpretation, so who's going to interpret what's reasonable? Because here we are with something that we feel is a little bit petty of a change, yet it stirred an uproar. So I think we need to be careful with what and what isn't reasonable from the city's side, so we probably need to clarify that to, as your point, what's going to disrupt day-to-day business and drag along that. Probably important, you know, we need to figure that out.
There's a lot of policies that are set in place that have nothing to do, you know, a lot of, anything on employee or a union. Basic procurement, you know? Basically, just operations that really are policies that get set by the opening board that unions have no, no component to, to deal with. And so if there's something, it would really have to be clearly defined and then probably incorporated into, you know, that, that labor agreement.
But then, we're still in a position, we're talking about twenty-twenty-five because given the current circumstances, we're beyond thirty days and the grievance that we're discussing now is kind of null and void, right? Because we're outside that window.
It, it definitely could be, that's an action that council could, could put into place. This is the exact same language due to have in the other two union agreements also. We try to get those as consistent as possible. This component in that case, council would say, hey, you're outside of thirty day, we provide a, you know, we have thirty days to provide a response back to the union after this potential hearing.
But they could still go back to arbitration.
Well, yes, they, go back to arbitration or let it die and next time policy gets done, if a policy is between that timeframe, agree that, that next action also, so, and we'll be back to square one, I guess.
And I, well, but it take, I mean, what do you want, if you want this article three, I'll turn to three here, sit down and go back over it all, is that what you're?
I'm not saying that every policy you guys come up with, we need approval, but going by article forty-two, that policy's in the handbook. You guys want to have a new one or change it to this handbook, going by article forty-two, we should have approval of that. Procurement one of those is in there, so defines what level the employee needs to have a purchase order for a purchase. And we have way more procurement policy beyond that, that the city, one piece of that is within that handbook. Because it's procedurally put into place, you know, so it's.
Can you articulate your objection to alternative two? Is there anything about that specifically that you object to?
Not necessarily enough.
I just feel like option two would be saving a lot of people time maybe, especially since they're hearing that a lot of, maybe the policies would not have an interest of the union.
Yeah, no, I, I could be on board for alternative two.
I think that's how a lot of legislation works, you know? Law is passed and then, you know, you can, the, the law is passed and then it goes into effect and then if it needs to overturn, that happens afterward, but that's how a lot of legislation works anyway.
Banking ready works that way, they cover some rent and they give us a window of, of time before they implement it.
So I feel like that's pretty like consistent with just any government process. But if you all don't have any objection, you spin alternative two.
Do you have any insight on that one?
While they're talking, Mike, can I get your opinion on the grievance time window? I mean, I just want to make sure so we don't get in trouble with the labor relation board or something like that, I mean, I.
You're reading it as calendar days or?
The way I read it is when it doesn't specify its calendar days. But, I mean, you have a lot of different things going on in there, so, you know, it, it's, it's subject to interpretation. Just like the question about the two paragraphs is subject to interpretation, you know, where, where it is now. You know, if you're going to deny the, the grievance based on the thirty days, you can simply deny the grievance and then that would be what they would appeal. That would, would be where it is. Then you can implement conditional, alternative two or whatever, if that's what you decide to do. But for the council right now, you have a grievance, you have really three ways to resolve. One, it's out of time. We're not going to consider the grievance itself, the merits of it, because it's out of time. And deny the grievance based on that. Two, we're going to say you're in time and we're going to consider the merits. And then it is, we're going to read the policy as we have the authority under this paragraph to make this rule and deny the grievance. Or we're going to accept the grievance under the line that was added to the one about adding things to the handbook. So you, you have three alternatives. One, deny it for time, two, deny because of the, the reading of the policy, or three, accept the grievance.
We could be on board for alternative two.
So, so if we want to install them to, obviously it's not on the agenda, so we can't do it today, we have to do it at a future meeting.
What's that?
Then alternative two, if that's something.
But the action item right now is whether or not to accept the grievance, so that's.
That's the only thing acting on that.
So, so.
That's all you can do, that's all you can do. And we have to give them a written response within thirty days.
So then how would we implement that alternative two?
Well, then you'd have, you have to do this first and then they'll have.
Well, then you have, you have to do this first, and then they'll have to, they'll have a chance to rebuttal themselves, and if you deny their grievance, they can take it further if they, if they choose to do so. So that's all we're acting on here, these alternatives come after they decide with the union whether or not they're going to accept us denying their grievance, that's the only thing we're working on right now. All these other things are great ideas, but we just have to do the process first.
And I, I just want to be in good faith, if, if we're, if they're saying, hey, we're willing to work with you on two, we're willing to work with you on two, then we can, I mean, at least we can have that conversation and then go forward, because I don't want to, you know, say we deny it based on time tonight, and then you never see that again, and then you're going to be, then you wouldn't have the trust in us, you know, we just want to, I, I just want to have everybody get along in the same higher.
That's, that's my idea, yeah. We can settle this pretty quick.
So prior to the council taking an action item, we're still in an open session, I recommend council move into a closed session, just for, you know, depending what that action, discuss what actions we would want to take, we can talk about what response would be taken for that, you know, within that thirty-day response time, how we want to handle that, that piece itself, and then, you know, we'd be able to go in closed session, because it could be pending litigation or go to arbitration, you know, however, that would be, and also our collective bargaining, bargaining component, then come out of it and then actually take action on that, on that item.
I'll make the motion to live in the executive session.
Who was my second, sorry. All right, so we'll go into, the motion going to closed session. Make a specific, no, respect to, respect to collective bargaining and/or pending litigation.
And we will open the door, we will come back in and.
One may. All right, I'll kill the light here, I'll do the repeat and I was supposed to do. The motion second and the vote, and the vote or the approval vote to go into a closed session in respect to collective bargaining and/or pending litigation. In the screen, if I can here, go back one square.